Thank you, you did, thank you.
I had to plug that in though.
I mean, I asked you to raise it. It was a negative tone.
Yeah.
And you don't wanna, you don't wanna bring up another contentious thing, you know, draw attention to something that we're working on.
Very, very.
Uh, mine, I took that there, did you see mine?
So the plan was a land swap between Williams and the county.
I felt that, that felt right.
I thought, is it seventy or seventy-one?
Hmm, definitely.
What do we do? What, what else do we stick?
We've done more than anyone else.
I don't know the answer to that, but I feel like I'm not mad about it.
No.
Okay. Is ready? It being five thirty, I'll call this meeting of the Village Board of Trustees to order. If everyone would please stand for a moment of silent prayer and reflection, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Turner, would you kindly call the roll?
Of course, Mayor. Trustee Steinwaddle?
Present.
Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee Simmons?
Present.
Trustee DeVor?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
Trustee Riker?
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. Uh, we'll move along to the approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on August nineteenth. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Riker and a second by trustee Simmons. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would like, uh, for, um, trustee Weisenberg, uh, chief Aheart, uh, and to join me and clerk Turner at the podium, uh, so we can have the swearing in of Officer Ahim Al Hashemi. Pretty good?
Yeah. Okay, sounds good, alright.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Ahim Al Hashemi.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I would support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the officer patrol officer?
The duties of the officer patrol officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations. So we'll now move along to comments from the audience. If there are any one wishing to make a comment, we'd ask that you come to the podium, try to keep your comments to five minutes, and give your name and address. Public comments going once. Twice. Public comments are closed. We'll proceed to old business. Is there any old business to come before the board? Hearing none, we'll move along to new business. Uh, first on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-five seventeen sixty-eight, an ordinance approving and authorizing an execution of a business development district number one redevelopment agreement by and between the village of Peoria Heights and Bradley University. Trustee Kazam?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by trustee Kazam and seconded by trustee Weisenberg. Trustee Kazam?
This, um, agenda item has to do with the new community kitchen over on Kingman in the, um, old pump house. We're all very excited about the collaboration with Bradley. I see Jim Foley in the audience this evening, and he may want to give us an update on that. Um, this is a request to use BDD funds, um, for ten thousand dollars. I'd like to tell all of my trustees that the investment that Bradley has made into that facility that is owned still and only leased by Bradley, owned by the village of Peoria Heights and leased by Bradley, is just under a hundred thousand dollars. They've put in a hood, made other, very, um, beautiful improvements to the building, and so I think this request is actually very, very modest considering their investment.
Mr. Foley, do you want to say anything? You made it all this way.
Well, sure. Hi, thanks. Appreciate that. We, uh, I swear, before I started this project, I was Googling the cost of hoods, and I can tell you I was completely wrong, and that's okay, because we had to do it right, and we did do it right, and you've got an amazing, uh, type-one hood. It was a type-two before, but we had to do other things. The cabinet wasn't in the right place. We brought in, um, we used, uh, uh, trees for the plumbing and, and it, it did come to nearly a hundred thousand dollars, and we haven't stopped yet. There's some more things we want to do as well. It's going well, and we're gonna be at the Taste of the Heights. We've got two of our entrepreneurs, so come check us out at Durier and Prospect, but otherwise it's going well, so really appreciate your support. It means a lot to us.
Thank you, Director Rowley, thank you. Any comments, questions about this item? Then, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote on that.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to the second item, under Economic, Community, and Development, approval of a special use application filed by William Sharp, Total Income Tax, Total IRS Relief, seeking a special use permit for the installation of a one-digital electronic multiple message sign pursuant to section nine dash four dash ten subsection E of the village code for the property located at one-one-zero-five East War Memorial Drive, Peoria Heights, which is currently zoned B-two, general business district. Trustee Kazam?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion by trustee Kazam and seconded by trustee Riker. Trustee Kazam?
Um, I support the digital, digital sign in this location. I think my fellow trustees who have worked with me for many years know that in general I'm not for digital signs in specific areas of the village of Peoria Heights for a multitude of reasons. Um, along this corridor, I think that it is, um, warranted and in a lot of, uh, ways helpful to recognize particularly in the darker months when we lose daylight early that businesses are open and so I, I personally am supporting this.
Thank you. Trustee Kazam? Any other comments or questions on this item?
Um, I do. I have been very, like, influential with trustee Kazam as far as signage goes in the village, and, um, I have been pretty, very anti, um, digital signs, however, I have sometimes, you know, been persuaded into approving digital signs and I, for that reason, and like, for having the regret of doing that, I'm gonna stand true to myself in, nothing against the business, but I will not be voting in favor of the digital sign.
I also forgot to mention, Mayor, that this did pass zoning unanimously. Unanimously, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns about this item?
What's the size of the sign?
Um, three feet by six feet. Yeah, three by six feet.
And what's the height of it?
Sorry, I don't, I don't have that. What was your question? What the height, height is? I think it's, it's like, gonna be on the building. It's three feet high and six feet wide. And Mr. Pittsle is in the audience tonight. He could speak to this maybe because he represents the zoning board.
Yeah, the sign height is probably gonna be something like, you know, four and a half feet off the ground where they're talking about putting it on the side of that building, but, uh, it's on the side of a one-story building, facing west. As you come down, uh, War Memorial to be on the, you know, the north side facing west.
Okay. And before you go-
And they, they, we did make a stipulation in there that they followed the, to make sure they followed the code, which is, you know, no moving items on the sign. Dwell time of ten seconds, and, um,
Automatic dimming?
And that they auto dims in the evening.
That was actually gonna be my next question, if it dims at night.
And that auto dimming is kinda set by the companies, and they take the ambient light and they dim it. So, I mean, you could always ask them to dim it more, I'm assuming.
For those of us that weren't Boy Scouts, Wes would be pointing towards, uh, the stadium.
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one?
Don't go far. Okay. Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote on that.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Nay.
Trustee Weisenberg?
No.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
That was four to two, Mayor.
Okay, that motion carries. Moving the, uh, moving along, we'll proceed to approval of a site plan application filed by PH Executive Plaza LLC, seeking an approval of a site plan for the reconstruction and expansion of a surface parking lot for the property located at forty-five forty-one North Prospect Road, Peoria Heights, Illinois, uh, which currently is zoned B-four, low-impact industrial district. Trustee Kazam?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion by trustee Kazam, seconded by trustee DeVor. Trustee Kazam?
This is property that's located behind the Pabst Building. The property originally belonged to Williams Brothers, and the new owners of the Pabst Building had property that they owned along Prospect. They were, they exchanged the property with a land swap, um, opportunity rather than by purchasing it. Um, the purpose of this new property is to add, I think it's seventy-one to be specific parking spaces, it might be seventy. And they plan to resurface it, add attractive lighting, um, do many improvements to that entire area. So it will add at least seventy parking spaces behind Pabst, and that's needed for the new tenants that they have secured to go into the Pabst Building.
So in the, in the green space behind the building?
Mm-hmm.
And did this pass zoning as well?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes it did.
Is this open parking or just limited to the people in their building?
You know, I, at this point, I don't know. That's up to the people that own the property, but that's to be determined.
And there were conditions mentioned by the zoning board screening around off-street parking of the new lot, is that correct, Rick?
Yeah, according to the, uh, downtown overlay district, any parking needs to be screened, basically. So the new lot will have screening towards the south, which is towards CBS, and on the west, in the back. And then a few bushes like right near the building, kind of, where you come in on Cyberling. Uh, the old lot is the old lot, so they're gonna resurface that, but that's not being screened or changed in any way. And, uh, uh, and to your point, Brandon, they're, they're actually taking part of the park, the parking lot that's there now right behind the building.
That's what we were just talking about.
And that's gonna be green space, and then they're gonna put the parking lot behind that.
They have to screen on the west side, too?
Well, we kinda came to that determination as the zoning board was, uh, talking to them. Um, I guess we just thought it would be better if they screened on those two sides.
Okay, and any other comments or questions to come up for this item?
Can you remind me what the overlay district says that screening has to be?
It's a little vague. It says parking, um, on Prospect for, for, in the overlay district has to be screened from the street.
Okay.
So, um,
Bushes, hedges?
Yeah, so it's, they're gonna use bushes in this case, they're, yeah. They're not putting a fence up or anything. They're gonna use-
Use bushes.
Some sort of bush.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
How do we maintain that the, the bushes are maintained? Cause we had that issue down on twenty-nine as well, that we required, uh, business to put up bushes. A year later, they all died, and, you know, it was a fight to keep those bushes planted and alive.
Probably the same way we placed it on twenty-nine.
Okay.
Do the same thing.
If this is controlled access to, will the police department have access to it?
What was your question? I didn't hear it.
If this is controlled access, will the police department have access to it to patrol, or will this just be?
I would imagine we would.
Okay.
Yes, we'll cover that.
Okay, any other questions or concerns about this item? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote on that, please.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We'll proceed to the approval of the site plan filed by Washington Trails Edge LLC, seeking approval of a site plan for the development of a laundry establishment on the property located at seven-one-six East War Memorial Drive, Peoria Heights, Illinois, currently zoned B-two, general retail business district. Trustee Kazam?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Kazam, seconded by trustee DeVor. Trustee Kazam?
So the next two agenda items are linked together. This is a new business proposed for the location that was already stated. It will be a drive-through laundry facility. Um, you can drop your laundry off, for example, on your way to work and pick it up on your way home. You can also go in and do your own laundry. Um, it's the property, in this case, they're combining two parcels, um, to accommodate their specific design and layout for that business.
Is this a sales tax generating business?
You know, it's more of a service, but they will be selling products in there. They had a conversation with them about this, and I think if they sell like laundry detergent or that type of thi, those types of things. Well, actually, now that I think of it, if they're doing your own laundry, it may be sales tax generating. I don't know the answer to that. If you're dropping it off, that would be more of a service.
Do we get sales tax revenue from Grand View Laundromat?
No, we do not. Yeah, and I don't believe it is, trustee Kazam. I think that if, if, if there are things that they're selling, it's gonna be minimal.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to let you know I'm gonna abstain from this conversation due to professional relationships with the hood family at this time.
Understood.
I will tell my fellow trustees that, um, both, um, trustee Steinwaddle and I met with the Joseph family downtown at Austin Engineering. We saw the renderings of the building. It's very attractive. It's cleaning up an entire, uh, corner there near Leonardo's and that area. I think it will be a really nice addition to that neighborhood, um, both visually and also just kind of organizationally, the way that they've redirected traffic through the property, that type of thing.
Is it gonna be open twenty-four hours, like, if you wanna go in there and do your own laundry?
No, I think it has set hours, actually.
Six AM to ten AM?
Yeah, six to-
Or ten PM, excuse me?
Yeah, six to ten.
This might be a question for Superintendent Chandler. Would this be helpful with our water situation, getting some more water moving, based on having?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, with the car wash down there, they're using-
Yeah, trying to get the water moving.
If I may, I noticed that the two, um, items that are mentioned are the site plan and the special use. There were three topics that came up in front of the zoning board, and one of which was, um, the sign. Am I correct? On the scale of the sign. I do have a question in regards to, are there representatives here tonight that can answer these questions, please? And I see behind me that there are samples of what the actual building material under the site plan. I have questions about that. I have a little reservation on the product, the porcelain tile. I know that it's a very shiny tile. It's something that I'm usually seeing in a shower. I believe you wanted it to look like water on the side of the building, is that correct?
I think it would be helpful if you came to the podium. Thank you so much.
And these are your samples here behind me? He doesn't know.
Yes, those are the three that we chose.
I'm familiar with porcelain tile, and the reservation that I have with it is because of the shininess and the reflection. And if this is gonna be the size of a billboard, is it going to cause a safety issue for motorists when it comes to light reflections? Sunlight, motor vehicle lights, et cetera?
Um, we, um, I believe that the tile comes in different glossiness levels.
Okay, I mean, it's a beautiful tile, but I am, oh, you know, uh, familiar with the shininess, and I'm afraid with the scale of it, is it going to be too much of a safety risk?
Well, once we get into the design process, uh, we can, we can look at the shininess levels and see if it would be a cause for concern.
Actually, trustee Simmons, and I have never discussed this, but if you look at the new historic rehabilitation of the OSF building downtown?
Yeah.
That is porcelain tile, indeed. It's, it's like a white porcelain tile. I'm not sure it's the same sheen as this, but that's a massive building, and it's a historic landmark.
And I understand that it will be facing north on War Memorial, right directly towards the traffic?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else wanna look at it?
I, can you pass it?
Absolutely.
And trustee Kazam, so it looks like there's a, there's a turn-in off of, uh, one-fifty. Are they gonna be able to use that turn-in? Because it's existing, cause I know we've had some issues with right-hand turn-ins.
Yeah, I think that they can speak to this. Would you like to stay at the podium and talk about the overlay? Uh, I mean, the way you've laid out the parcel?
Sure.
Are you gonna be able to turn in right off of one-fifty?
No, you will not.
Because there's an existing turn-in there, but you can't use it?
No, no, there isn't. They're gonna have to go around. The only way, the only way they would be able to access that is through I dot, if a street went all the way through to Paris, which that has not been. I don't think that was their desired plan anyway. So they're gonna go around from Wisconsin, I believe, and enter that ra, that way.
Yeah, and we've, we've dead-ended our access aisle in, in anticipating a future extension in cooperation with the neighboring owner of Schooners to connect our drive aisles so that we have a, uh, one cross-through um, all the way to, I believe that's Illinois.
Yes.
And was there any concern during zoning about traffic in the neighborhood?
I know that the zoning board approved the site plan and the special use plan, but they did not approve the signage. I'm sorry, I guess I'm confused. Is this meant, was this designed to be like the entire exterior, or is this what you wanted to use for the sign?
That's what's going on-
That's not sign, it's building material, correct?
That particular three tile, uh, collage-
Yeah.
Is just behind our signage.
Okay.
Cause we plan white lettering for our signage.
Okay.
And, um, we originally submitted our plan to have a signage variance, but they voted that, against that.
Okay.
So we're shrinking down that signage area, and along with that signage area, we're shrinking down the amount of facade that we're using that for. It's more of just an aesthetic, um, to make the building a little more interesting.
Okay.
Um, but our main facade is just twenty-four inch by forty-eight inch porcelain tile.
Okay.
That's completely white. It's the whitest tile that-
To put your mind at ease, too, the traffic on War Memorial goes east to west.
Yeah.
But the, the tile is gonna be facing north, should, shouldn't obstruct any.
I do, but there's still reflections. So, but I just, you explaining the fact that it is going to be scaled down with the sign in proportion, so it makes me feel a little more at ease with that. I just wanted to bring it to the attention that building material was never mentioned before. So I wanted to question it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, clerk Turner?
So, if you look at the conditions, the conditions we put on this site plan was that they, there's a whole lot of lots down there, and they're, they're still like thirty-foot lots, so a lot of the lots go right through the existing buildings, like right down the middle of them. So the tax assessor was having, you know, a come apart, the fact that they're not sure how to tax different things. Um, so this will clean all that up. So one of the stipulations we made was before they start construction that they have to do all that lot splitting so that they have six, I think it's six lots, right now. I don't know how many there is now, but there will be six lots, and each building will have its own lot.
Okay.
So a new subdivision will be done with these parcels.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, any other comments or questions on this topic? Hearing none, clerk Turner, would you call the roll?
Trustee Steinwaddle?
I'll be abstaining.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We'll proceed to the, uh, approval of a special use application filed by Washington Trails Edge LLC, seeking a special use permit for the operation of a laundry establishment on the property located at seven-one-six East War Memorial Drive, Peoria Heights, which is currently zoned B-two, general retail business district. Trustee Kazam?
I don't know that I have much more to say on this particular item. As I mentioned before, these are, you know, grouped together.
Okay. Fair enough.
Unless Mr. Pittsle has something to say about it.
Okay.
Other than the hours of operation where the, the, uh-
Six AM to ten PM is what I read? Okay.
Okay, well, uh, trustee Kazam, then I'll have a motion.
Oh, pardon me, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion approved by trustee Kazam, seconded by trustee DeVor. Any other discussion on this item? Then we'll have a roll call vote.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Abstaining.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Motion carries, thanks. Congrats. Okay, we'll move along to administration and finance under trustee DeVor. Uh, first on the list is an ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen sixty-nine, an ordinance amending Title Four, Chapter Two of Village Code of the village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of increasing the permitted number of video gaming establishment licenses. Trustee DeVor?
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen sixty-nine.
Second?
I second.
Motion by trustee DeVor, seconded by trustee Weisenberg. Trustee DeVor?
Um, so as you guys know, every time we want, someone wants to add gaming or liquor licenses, we do have to increase the number of licenses we have available. Um, we currently have seventeen, and we would be looking, um, just to add one to eighteen. And I believe that this is intended to be used for Beams, which is the new bar, um, on restaurant on Route twenty-nine.
That is correct. Any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote on that.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We'll proceed to ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen seventy, an ordinance adding new Article E to Chapter Three of Title Three of the Village of Peoria Heights Code implementing a municipal grocery tax. Trustee DeVor?
I make a motion to pass ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen seventy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion by trustee DeVor, seconded by trustee Riker. Trustee DeVor?
Um, so this would, has been obviously very controversial, as we've all done a lot of research on how, and how we wanna move forward with this. Um, this would be to implement the municipal grocery tax that was removed at a state level and is now put onto the municipality. Um, I just wanna remind my fellow trustees that this tax is currently being paid, and it is a loss of a village, to the village of at least a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, that is before some of the developments that have happened for us. Um, and that is even one, like, that is even a dollar amount that we would lose even after no longer having our grocery store. So just to keep in mind on, um, what that does to our already tight budget that we've been working in, um, to be able to continue to put in this water filtration system, support our fire department, et cetera, so that's where we're at with it.
Okay. Anyone else wanna comment on this issue?
I do, Mayor, but I'll wait until the end.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure everybody knows where I stand, so I'll wait till the end.
Um, I'm gonna be voting in favor of this. Um, a year ago, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was something we were pretty much begging for, to hire full-time firefighters, fix our water infrastructure. Um, so any extra income is going to help, um, help continue the future, see us into the future of our village, so.
I, I echo that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say a word on this if I could.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Um, it's kinda crazy I think I'd be in favor of a tax, of a tax, but here's the truth. The village has si, some of the highest commercial real estate costs in the area. Grocery stores typically operate on razor-thin margins of one to two and a half percent. Combine that with our high property costs, because we're a very desirable community. It's unlikely a grocery store could sustain itself here in Peoria Heights without added support. Surrounding communities not only have lower commercial real estate costs, but also a number of bit, of vacant big-box locations from the loss of businesses such as Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, Kroger, Big Lot, Big Lots, and Best Buy, just to name a few. That availability and lo- That availability and lower cost structure allows for higher margins in the city of Peoria and surrounding communities, putting us at a disadvantage. Even with TIF and BDD funds, those come with government restrictions and strings attached, the long-term picture just doesn't work. A 1% grocery tax would generate about $125,000 a year, or keep that coming in, which the village could use at its discretion to directly or indirectly incentivize and sustain business such as a grocery store. Losing the tax means losing $125,000 a year, funds that could make all the difference in bringing business here. And let's be clear, 1% tax by itself doesn't guarantee other businesses, but it, but not having it certainly doesn't incentivize one to come here either. There's no value in it on the profit end without this added tool. Without a store, we not only lose the grocery tax, but we also, we're also losing valuable sales tax revenue that could help fund critical needs in the Heights. That missing revenue puts the tax burden squarely on our citizens when it comes to fixing things like our water infrastructure, supporting our fire department, and covering other major expenses we have as a community. To me, it would be irresponsible not to ensure access to grocery for, groceries for our residents. Programs like LINK already, already protect our most vulnerable from food costs, but there are programs out there that don't cover transportation. Having something local, close, and accessible is simply a quality of life issue for everyone in the Heights. At the end of the day, it's more important to protect our community by ensuring access to groceries than it is uh, to have a soundbite saying that we're not implementing aggressive, oppressive, oppressive or cash-grabbing tax. This is about what's doing right for the Heights. Every community around us already has implemented this tax and give, and it gives us another tool beyond the usual rebates and BDD funds to make a grocery store possible without putting a burden entirely on our other retailers.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just, Trustee Simmons, are you wanting to say anything, or?
I was just going to say that I've been on the fence on this subject for quite a while, and I've listened to both sides, and I understand them. However, under the circumstances, with being overseeing the category of water, I understand that the sales tax will help with infrastructure, safety, and other costs that we may need to take care of in our community, so I am going to be in favor of this tax.
Mayor, sometimes I feel like I'm on the wall of the Alamo, but $125,000 is not a loss to the Village of Peoria Heights. If we institute this tax, it's a $125,000 loss to the citizens of Peoria Heights. Money is best left in the pockets of our families. Fellow trustees, I wanted to stress that grocery taxes are regressive. They place the heaviest burden on those least able to afford it, working families and seniors on fixed incomes. That's exactly why the state of Illinois repealed the 1% sales tax. As of January, it is gone. If we move forward with this local tax, it becomes a tax increase on our residents. Even if it starts the same day the state tax ends, don't let anyone fool you. It is a new tax. Some may argue there's no gap, but timing doesn't change the fact that this would be a new tax. Uh, Illinois is not maintaining the grocery tax. It is ending it. That's, uh, what's being proposed here is simply shifting the burden from the state level to the local level. This makes this a new tax. I want to stress, plain and simple, a new tax. It's also worth noting that very few states tax groceries at all. In fact, Illinois is one of only 10 states that still do. And by 2026, both Illinois and Arkansas are eliminating the grocery tax. Um, because they realize that that tax is regressive and it's unfair. If other, if other states are moving away from this practice, why would we move towards it? The village board was against raising sales taxes. Not too long ago, we proposed raising taxes on the restaurants in Peoria Heights, and Lorenzo's, and Hearth, and the Chamber of Commerce, and everyone was up here telling us not to raise sales taxes. Uh, but here today, we stand on the precipice of raising sales tax uh, that will fall hardest on poor people and their families, and seniors who can least afford it. I ask my fellow trustees to hold the line. We said we were not going to raise sales taxes, and here we are, we're doing it. We might not have the Chamber of Commerce here. Poor people don't have a Chamber of Commerce that advocate for them. Do not raise sales taxes. The citizens of Peoria Heights do not want this tax. They do not. There's not a single person in Peoria Heights that elected us to institute new taxes. Um, they are citizens of Illinois, like us. They are already taxed to the brink. We should be listening to them, not adding to their burden. They do not want new taxes. Most Illinois citizens complain about the governor and his taxes and his share. You know he wants it. Tonight, we have an opportunity not to raise taxes. It doesn't fall on J.B. Pritzker. It falls on the people of this board. We have, we have an opportunity to do, I think, what's not been done in my lifetime. I don't remember taxes going down in Illinois. We have an opportunity tonight to not raise taxes. We have a chance to do what is right and to do what a majority of states do not allow taxing groceries. Please join me tonight in voting against new taxes.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Regarding the vote tonight, we can still revisit it at another date, is that correct?
Yes, as Trustee Weisenberg stated, that the timing of this vote is to ensure that there is not a gap uh, between when the current state of Illinois grocery tax phases out and when a new local municipal tax would phase in. However, you can, this board could add a municipal tax at any time as a home rule entity. It is just, this is by the Department of Commerce um, that are setting this date of Oc, October 1st to have this in so that the tax can be passed. Is that my correct counsel?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, this grocery tax can be revisited at a later time. The, the implementation and timing of it depends upon when it is sent to the Department of Revenue. So if it's sent by a certain date, it will be in effect by July 1st. If it's sent by October 1st, it will be in effect by the subsequent January 1st.
Okay.
And just, oh, I'm sorry.
And just a follow-up, uh, comment to what I said before about how this board said no to sales taxes before. Raising the food and beverage tax that we just, that we talked about before would actually raise more money. It would like raise the cost of a hamburger by 25 cents or something like that. That is more moral than raising the cost of a single family or income, or a senior on fixed income, eggs and milk. If we're going to raise taxes, raise it on those who can afford it, not those who can't. We already said we weren't going to raise taxes. Do not raise taxes on poor people.
I was actually just going to speak to that, and I respect your opinion, Trustee Weisenberg. Um, just to be perfectly clear, when that issue was in front of us, that, we were adding on an additional percentage to an already existing tax that was not going to be reduced before our addition. This is a little bit different. This is the state of Illinois taking the tax away and then us either voting for or against maintaining it by doing.
Right. The state of Illinois repealed the tax, so the tax is zero. So we're taking it from zero to 1%.
I would also like, Mr. Mayor, to point out that
Yes.
our primary grocery tax come from businesses on the Ward Drive corridor. Um, I looked today, according to IDOT, there are 25,700 cars that go down the Ward Drive corridor, so roughly about five times the citizen, the population of Peoria Heights, just in cars, goes down the Ward Drive corridor. I would think that most of us would agree that majority of those $125,000 come from those cars.
From gas surveys of Peoria.
Coming from outside of our community. Yeah, I believe that if not having this grocery tax puts that $125,000 that we will eventually need on our citizens, and having us to, having to tax our current businesses like we just talked about. Um, also, I'd like to stress that the lower income, uh, we do, we've got two food pantries, and we also have a state system link that tends to be fairly generous and takes care of our lower-income households. Um, with the grocery tax, with Illinois not having grocery tax, or having grocery tax, and a lot of states don't, yes, I actually looked into that. Um, some states take kind of a hybrid approach. They do the same thing. They get rid of the state tax and let the local municipalities implement it at their discretion. So there's, um, you know, following what everybody else does, it's just such a plethora of what's out there. But the truth is, I don't want to see the $125,000 going back onto our residents, you know, by having to say, okay, we need to raise our water bill, you know, more because we're missing this, or we've come up short this, this month for whatever reason. And I would like to see that number stay in place so that we do have all the ammunition that we can to grow or incentivize and have an unfair advantage of getting a grocery store here, or some sort of food.
Forgive me, Trustee Steinwell, but I don't think it's, it's an option to tell people that, yeah, we're going to tax you, and if it's too much for you, go to a food bank. I mean, that's essentially what, what I just heard. Um, and I will say that 100% of the people that come through the Heights are citizens of Illinois, and they are taxed to the brink. This is a tax cut. So no matter if they're Peoria Heights citizens, or citizens of Peoria, or Eureka, or West Peoria, everyone needs a 1% tax cut. We are taxed to the death. Um, and I think money is best left in the pockets of citizens, um, to make their own decisions, and hopefully they don't need food banks.
So I, I disagree with one thing that, that you did say, that nobody in the Village of Peoria Heights wants to see this 1% tax stay, because it is. It's, it's leaving and it's staying. If, if we hadn't discussed it as a board, I don't think anybody in the Village of Peoria Heights would have noticed that 1% change. If, if we didn't, if it wasn't all over the news that we're dropping it and that we're bringing it back in, nobody would have even noticed it. However, I had people calling me, asking my stance on this, and, eh, not my parents, just, just to be clear. Um, people that, that told us that they supported this tax because of the way that the money can be spent. It can be spent on upgrading our, uh, upgrading some of the needs that our fire department has, helping towards the water, helping towards our public works. Uh, i- it's all money that goes back into our village. It's not money that is, is handed out to other things. It is money that we will put aside for a new fire truck, or money that we could put aside for
In our, in our general.
new lights, or Christmas decorations, and all goes into the budget of something that we've, in the past, always had to put aside, put back because we didn't have the budget for it, that now we can get. So that, that is my perspective on it, and that is literally something somebody said to me today, is like, had you guys not talked about it on the village board, I never would have even noticed that 1% change. And, and I found that a very interesting thing, because it is. We're not raising, I mean, yes, we are, based on, from the state of Illinois, but Peoria has agreed to this tax, and so all surrounding areas are going to start looking to this. And if we get rid of this 1% tax, we will not get it back. So i- i- I mean, it will look worse if we take it away for a year and decide, oh, man, we made a mistake, we need that $125, and we have to come back and say, hey, guys, sorry, we gave you your break, but we're back at it. I'd rather keep it now and have everything left unchanged than have to apologize to the people of Peoria Heights in a year because we needed that money, and we, we thought we did it. And a year ago, $125,000 was a huge deal to us, and it still is a huge deal, and it's a huge deal to the people that came to this meeting and said they want a fire department, they want full-time firefighters, they want all these things, that we could not give them because we could not afford it. And now keeping this 1% grocery tax is going to get us one step closer to giving them more of what they want.
I agree.
If it was unnoticed, the state wouldn't have ended it. It is regressive. That is why it was ended. Um, everyone's got to eat. I, I think a full-time fire department's great, but it's no good if you're dead because you can't eat. Taxing groceries is immoral. That's why a majority of states don't do it. Don't tax groceries.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to just make it clear, LINK and food pantries are there as protection that, for people that can't afford food. I don't mean to say that we should have people on there. It's just a protection that we do have in place and is an absolute necessity because people do need to eat. But if we do get rid of this tax, we will have to make up the money somewhere with the projects that we have coming up. We've got the water infrastructure projects, water treatment facility. We've got a fire department that is growing, and we've got a population, nighttime population that is growing, um, that we do have to address. We will have some additional costs within the next few years.
Administrator Sutton, uh, correct my memory, or maybe Clerk Turner. Every year since 2019, we've ended the year with right around, uh, well, one year it was a million-dollar surplus, uh, but I think most years it's right around 200, uh, $300,000. I know it's because of the frugality of the government and good spending and good fiscal policies, everything a government should do, so we're basically looking at if we don't pass this tax, maybe we'd have to squeeze by at a $200,000 surplus. Is that?
Even with all the extras that we added at the end of the year, last year, we still finished with approximately $250,000.
Right. So the, the idea that the village cannot afford this does not match our historical fiscal information. We have surpluses. You know, I'm, I'm not saying 100, having an extra $125,000 is not a good thing. I'm, I'm not trying to say this. It's not doomsday for the Village of Peoria Heights if we do not institute this tax. It could be doomsday for a family just getting by. I, at the risk of beating a dead horse here, I'll stop, but the Village of Peoria Heights can afford this. Don't let anyone fool you that we can't. Our budget for the last six years.
I'll comment on the last eight years, and that we've, that has been the average. Some have been higher, but it's never been lower than that, so you are right. That's why we've been able to put that amount of money back, and we have the big account that we do.
The government should not hoard money. Families in our communities, 60% of our families in our school district are at or below the poverty level. They cannot afford this. Okay? Our school district, our children, our school district, uh, Trustee Riker may, can perhaps speak to this, but the poverty level is so bad in the Village of Peoria Heights that all kids get free lunches. Okay? The fact that our community cannot afford this is well documented. Please do not tax groceries.
I, I would, I would tend to say, I agree with you, government should not hoard money at all. But I will point out the fact that we do have a lot of deferred maintenance issues, such as our water infrastructure, um, a lot of our roadways and things like that, that need to be addressed, and we do have that surplus in place so that we can start addressing those ma, massive infrastructure issues that are coming down the pipe at us at this point. Um, so having that money in place does allow us to improve our community, improve the quality of life with it, for our citizens.
I wanted to mention, too, that I know myself and a lot of other families go to these other communities to shop. I go to Aldi's, I go to Walmart, I go to Hy-Vee. They're getting that tax.
Shame on them. They shouldn't have raised it. They shouldn't have done it. I mean, that doesn't make it moral.
Yeah.
No, I, I didn't, that wasn't a dig at you, Trustee Simmons.
No, I, I understand.
But no one should do it.
I absolutely respect your opinion.
Yeah, no one should do it.
I said earlier, I, I've been on the fence with this subject. With all the responsibilities that we are looking at, personally, again, category, infrastructure with water, you know, we want to move forward with these projects, and every little bit helps in our general fund.
That certainly wasn't a dig at you, Trustee Simmons.
Oh, I know, no, I know.
This may be the first time I've ever been on the side of J.B. Pritzker, so.
I also forgot to mention that I have heard from residents, and they are not my family, and every person that has reached out to me on this issue is for the tax. So I just want, I forgot to mention that in the beginning, and I wanted to say that.
I receive phone calls as well, and, um, that helped me make the decision that I've made tonight.
Okay. Sounds like maybe everyone has their decision ready. Um, any other one want to discuss this? I told the trustees that I would keep my commentary to myself this time.
Well, come on, Mayor.
Uh, because I spoke up at the last meeting, so I'll, I'll, I'll keep my commentary to myself. Uh, and with that, we'll have a roll call.
Trustee Steinwelle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Nay.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
The motion carries. We'll proceed to, uh, a request for the use of Tower Park on Saturday, October 25th, 25, 25, for the distracted dog event. Trustee DeVor?
I make a motion to approve the use of Tower Park on Saturday, October 25th, for the distracted dog event.
Second.
Well, we needed a little bit of a
Lighter note.
lighter note on this, so. Is anyone here to speak on this event?
I would love to know what a distracted dog is.
I'm a funding advocate, that's for sure.
So I work with a distracted dog. I'm a photographer. I also kind of do event coordination. And they are dog trainers out on North Peoria. They're kind of off Allen Road. They are wanting to do just a big like Halloween event where they invite like local businesses to come out, set up a booth. They don't want to charge them to do anything like that. And they want to invite like the community out to do like trick or treating, visit those different vendors, just have a safe place to bring your dogs and do different critical like training aspects in a high distraction environment. So that's kind of what we want to do.
Great.
So I assume with all these wonderful furry friends, four-legged friends in our community, you will have something out there like for cleaning up after the pets and that type of thing?
Yep, we plan to have like different stations, so like cleanup stations and stuff like that throughout the event. We also will do like our normal encouraging, like clean up after your pet. And we are going to make sure we go around the park as well and make sure everything is cleaned up.
Great. Okay, any other questions or comments on this item? If not, we'll have a roll call on that.
Trustee Steinwell?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, looking forward to the event. And with that, trustee DeVor, I think you're done.
Looks like it.
Okay. Moving on to trustee Simmons. Resolution 2025 dash 14, a resolution approving proposal from Woodard and Curran for engineering services for a filtration plant. Trustee Simmons?
I make a motion for resolution 2025 dash 14. I know that Jackie Hudnall is with us this evening. She is the vice president principal with Woodard and Curran. If any on the board here have questions, she would be able to help me with those questions. Mark Lee was also instrumental in the proposal and I appreciate your time. Moving forward mayor.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, we have a trust, a motion by trustee Simmons, second by trustee DeVor. Jackie, Mark, did you want to come up and speak on any of this? Mark, there was one change, I think, in the proposal. Late change sounded like everything, there's plenty of agreement on that change.
Yes, mayor, the, the change was pretty brief. For construction administration, normally that is a pretty variable event. We don't know what's going to happen to the contractor. The only change was they had a lump sum originally in the agreement. They agreed to switch that to a time, an hourly basis basically. So the hours are actually out there, they bill for it instead of a lump sum. That was no change in the top line number, just how they bill will be a little bit different.
I appreciate, Jackie, I appreciate the Wood and Curran being willing to do that. I think that's a signal to your willingness to work with the village and, so I, I think that's, that's a real demonstration, so I appreciate that. Any questions or concerns?
Looking forward to this going from phase one to phase two to done.
I think that, and it'll happen fairly quickly from what I understand.
We have a nine-month timeline.
Nine-month timeline. Love that.
Awesome.
To begin construction. Correct.
That's all right, we'll take it.
And trustee Simmons, again, I appreciate your efforts on this as well, working on, on this issue, making sure that this comes to where we see it today. So thank you for your efforts and thank you both for your efforts on this as well.
And just for those listening at home, the filtration plant is going to dramatically improve the quality of the water. You know, for those who, I know this sort of work, a lot of it is done behind the scenes. People don't see a lot of progress. This isn't, you know, the stuff, most of it's underground. But I just want to stress that this is unprecedented in the village of Peoria Heights to have a filtration for the water. One of the things I found, I think superintendent Chandler, it was almost like when I found my brother, that our water was not filtered.
It's never been filtered in the past.
Right. That blew my mind when I first got elected, that we literally take water out of the ground, put chlorine in it and ship it out.
And fluoride.
Oh, and fluoride.
And phosphate.
And phosphate. But it's not filtered. It comes out of the ground, you mix it up a little bit and we send it to the households. That, that blew my mind. So for those that, you know, constantly question, you know, what, what is this board doing? Since 2019, we hit the ground running on the water issues for good reason. And I think this filtration plant is going to be night and day, so.
And I want to mention that I will not sit here and take the credit for everything. The board before us has really been instrumental in getting this moving forward. I've just been thrown in the game, getting my head in it. And Woodard and Curran's been very instrumental. And I also want to mention that Five Star has done a fantastic job on my side of the implementation of the work that they're doing in our community as well. So, but I cannot take credit for all of this. You guys have all set us up to succeed and I appreciate that.
Last comment, I was a bit pessimistic about the sidewalk repairs, but I drove around and they actually look pretty nice.
Thank you. Thank you Brandon, we appreciate that. They restored them as they were, but a little bit better because they're
They're a lot better, they look great.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
I just want to remind everybody too that we, these, these look like big numbers here, but we have been very fortunate to receive a lot of grants or forgivable loans. So for this one, we aren't really on the hook for that much. I mean, administrator Sutton always reminds me that we will eventually have to bond for some of these water infrastructure projects that we have coming. But currently, right now, we have been very blessed for all the work that Woodard and Curran has put in and this administration to be able to receive some of these grants.
Absolutely.
Thank you all again. And I, I think one of the things that the biggest takeaway is, this is the biggest undertaking, our water system is the biggest undertaking that the village has done in, I think, multiple lifetimes in the village. So the amount of money that we're allocating and pushing out to this project, Don was here at our last meeting, 13.8 million for this, another one million for, for the main replacement on 29. So, you know, million here, a million there, we're starting to talk real money. And so fit, close to 15 million presently that we're doing on our water system.
Speaks volumes.
Unprecedented.
Yeah. So, thank you all. With that, any other questions or concerns to come on this item? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Trustee Steinwell?
Emphatically aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, we are down to miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous business to come before the board?
One, one thing mayor. Just, sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm sorry. Just a reminder, September 8th at 9:00 AM is coffee with a cop here at Village Hall. I'm hoping to see my fellow citizens here. I think it's going to be a great, hopefully a great turnout. I'm not really a coffee drinker, but I'll be here.
September 8th at 9:00 AM?
September 8th, 9:00 AM.
Okay.
Chief, do you want to add anything to that?
Nope, nope, it's, this takes place of the neighborhood watch. Seems to be, we're hoping to get out to more people that, that can't make it at night, maybe try to get a bigger presence during the daytime. Elderly that doesn't use the, the computers, stuff like that, we can meet face to face.
Great.
Will you be alternating that time at all throughout?
No, we'll probably, we'll probably see how that goes. Probably do it every other month, is our guess.
So we have a morning thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have one other thing. Mayor, we had a very successful festival this past weekend and that's wonderful. But I got a lot of calls from business owners and residents not knowing that the street was going to be shut down on one side of Prospect and also not understanding that there was going to be a bandstand and that type of thing. So, you know, I felt apologetic in a way as a board and as a representative of this municipality that that wasn't better communicated. I know that when, for example, the Blastics do this for St. Patrick's Day, they themselves notify their fellow businesses and, and neighbors and that type of thing. So I think it's up to us when something like that comes in front of us, as far as a road closure, that we express to them, they have to be communicating this.
This was a unique situation trustee Kazam, because you're, you're right. Normally when we shut off a block, you know, they, they go out, they speak with the businesses in that vicinity, explain to them when it's going to be, going to be closed. I was also called numerous times Saturday and we actually got out in front of it before, I mean, early morning really. So there was a little bit of confusion and I'll take responsibility for that. Next time it, it, it will be corrected. But we did get out in front of it before the festivities started. The barricades were removed and it was just that one block. But I want to thank superintendent Chandler for the opening and closing of the street and also chief Ahart. Again, like always, we had zero incidents over the weekend, so, but you're right. I, and I did, I did field a lot of those calls myself. So we'll, we'll make sure that, you know, everyone's on the same page moving forward.
Thank you. We did require that of them. I asked it myself as both of my businesses are directly impacted from that. So we did notify them that. I think there's something, if they come back to us again, that we need to revisit with them and like cross RT's and dot our I's because that was specifically requested of them when we approved it. I also know they're members of the chamber and the chamber happily would have pushed out some notification as well. But I don't, as far as I know, that wasn't asked of them.
I guess that was my next question. Like if a vendor comes into the community, they, they probably don't have that contact list. Do we maintain a contact list? I mean, do we want them to just go door knocking? I mean, like how would, how would that communication be facilitated? I, I don't, I don't have a business, so I'm not sure how that would work.
In this case, the Chamber of Commerce would do it. I, certainly if you're a member of the chamber and in this case they were. And I don't know probably even if you're not, so they can notify their own members if their businesses are going to be affected.
We do have emergency contacts for all businesses and contact information, sometimes they're out of date. We try to refresh those annually. So most of the time those are up to date and we use those.
Okay.
The Blastics have in the past provided a letter and they bring it into every business when they're going to close down the street. When the chamber has events and they're going to close down the street, if you are not a chamber member, they also have a written letter expressing like what's going on.
Okay.
I just had one other miscellaneous mayor. Last meeting, we discussed the Glen sidewalk improvement grant, the $40,000. Actually, the $40,000 was a supplemental amount. The original grant that we received was $700,000. I just wanted to correct that for everybody.
Nice. I thought that seemed a little cheaper concrete.
Do one block.
Now you have half of it.
Right.
Okay, I have something for miscellaneous. I am also along with this board, a member of the Peoria Heights Alumni Association. And the Alumni Association would like the board's permission to name the woodpecker. It, there's been tons of research done. It has never been given a name. And the Alumni Association thinks it would be a really great way to unite the community. The details on how we're going to do this are a little sparse right now, but we thought the first step would be getting permission from the board that you guys would be okay with us doing this. The roundabout idea is having kind of a vote done at the grade school on certain names, vote at the high school. There will be a box up here for people to kind of vote and let the community be involved in it as well. It's just something a little bit more fun. I think they were wanting to try to get it done before the all-class reunion that happens every year. But if we have to, you know, kind of push it out to next year's reunion, that can be done as well. There was supposed to be somebody here tonight that couldn't make it, so I just kind of wrote that down for something to think about. And I, I don't even know if we need approval to name the woodpecker.
Is that something, is that something you can announce at the 250th celebration?
It, it would. I mean, that could be something we could announce at the 250th.
Save it for a big celebration?
Yeah, we could, we could push it for that. I just, I just know that the alumni, we're just trying to think of something kind of fun to do to kind of unite the community with the schools and kind of put it all together. And I, I don't think we're just going to leave it open for everybody to put a name. One random, a, a, a random name, but I think we'll go from a selected narrowed down list to choose from ultimately.
So I think that's a great idea. Are we going to include St. Thomas and Peoria Christian as well?
I would like to, yes. I, that was a thought that crossed my head, it crossed my mind as well, is how to kind of
Yeah, I, I think we should include all the schools.
This is all kind of still bouncing around. We only meet, you know, once a month, so.
I, I think if you could incorporate it into the 250th, right? Because we have to have quite a big event for that. And I think that would be a fun way to get people excited about the event. We could announce it whenever we choose to have the event done and things like that. So I love the idea too, but I do think having it done before homecoming this year is a little bit of a tight time crunch. But I like the fact of maybe incorporating it into next year's event.
I too echo what trustee DeVor, as well as trustee Weisenberg says. I think getting the Alumni Association involved in the 250th is, is a great idea. You know, the woodpecker, they, I, I think originally painted that and
At the grade school.
At the grade school. However, it's the village that maintains it.
Yes, which is why.
And so we want to make sure that the entire village is included in this. So I think what trustee DeVor said, including that with the Illinois 250 city is a great way to do that. We can include the Alumni Association in that.
Some, some way for us all to work together, yeah. I guess I'm the bridge.
Thank you.
If I may, I've got something for miscellaneous.
Yep.
Chris Chandler and I, we had looked at some information regarding some signs. Brandon on the sign committee, we created a sign called Welcome to Peoria Heights. And we've got a few numbers on what it will cost to put these heights strategically around the community. So when you enter into our community, you see that you're in the Heights. We have 12 by 18 signs, they're $42 each. We need 12 of those. We have 18 by 24 signs that are $62 each. We would need four of those. So we're roughly looking at the total of $752 for the purchase of said signs. And I'd like to put it on, if I may mayor, on the next agenda.
Yeah, no, that, that doesn't, we won't need to do that. That can be done administratively.
Okay, great.
So if, if I could trustee Simmons, I don't know if the fellow, my fellow trustees remember when we brought this up, but I actually stole this idea from East Peoria, I'll give them props. When you enter East Peoria from like Washington to East Peoria, they have these little signs that say, Welcome to East Peoria, you've probably seen them. Because you don't really know where that boundary between Washington and East Peoria is. We have the same problem here in Peoria Heights and Peoria, you don't really know where that boundary is. So I thought it would be nice to have a Welcome to Peoria Heights sign whenever you make that threshold from Peoria into Peoria Heights. Kind of, you know, stating, hey, you're in Peoria Heights now buddy. And because a lot of people, they don't know when they're crossing into Peoria. Hopefully it'll help with crime, they say, oh, we don't want to go to Peoria.
Absolutely. I've always said the people who know the boundaries the most are the people sitting right here who know which doors to knock on and which ones not to.
And if I may to follow up, I know that mayor and Beth Kazam, trustee Kazam had mentioned the four signs that we have in the community, they're the larger signs. One on McDonald's, Prospect, Glen over here at the high school and help me out. One coming from the Junction. Lake and Boulevard, right there. We had ran some ideas together and are hoping to come up with a new design. We're hoping to keep the same posts so we could just do a vinyl overlay. But we would like a collaboration of ideas to create that, to move forward. And also overhead lighting above those signs because you cannot see them when you come into the community at night.
We have a logo though, which is It's difficult because I can see it on trustee Simmons' phone. It is using our logo. Which I love because on those signs, it's not our logo.
We want it to be cohesive.
Yeah, but even, what I'm saying, even on the big signs, I feel like there has to be a way to use our like existing logo and not the logo that's on them. Trustee DeVor and I have been through this a lot, through the logo. Trustee DeVor and I have been through this a lot, the logo, and we really have a wonderful, we are branded, I mean, we're so fortunate.
I do, I love it.
Our community has a very recognizable brand because of that logo, so I am in favor of that. And then, you know, I know that we're working with possibility of doing even more like elaborate gateway signage and that type of thing, but this is something that could be done relatively immediately, that would really change the look of these antiquated signs.
Yeah, we're working on it.
And, and one thing that trustee Kazam, if you remember or not, we were tasked a long time ago, kind of about signage and naming neighborhoods. But at some point, this village, this board could look at waypointing, so that we have signs that have our brand. Peoria is kind of doing something similar in some other communities, Williamsburg is doing it as well. But when you come into the community, the waypoint to, you know, maybe the Bradley Building, the Pump House, and then we can kind of name neighborhoods or parts of the heights that way.
I love that idea, and actually I think that the Peoria Heights Historical Society could be very helpful in that, in identifying. We, we got a little bit down the road on that, but then a lot of really major issues.
Covid, yeah.
Covid happens and then, okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all for your efforts.
I will, I'm sorry, I'll continue on signs. You guys approved a blinker size, blinking stop sign for Lake Street. It is installed, and administrator Sutton, I believe, Peoria is planning on installing theirs this week as well. So that should make that intersection a lot safer.
Have we moved any further on some children at play signs over or off Atlantic?
Yes, we have, I was just getting ready to move to that as well. We are still in the process of getting those signs received, and they have not been put up yet. That would be Atlantic between Cox and Division.
About weekly, I'm getting a question about it.
And then there was also a sign that was requested on Hazard between, between Atlantic and Monroe, so I have those in our notes. And administrator Sutton, do you want to mention about the stop sign?
The stop sign on Lake? Yeah, that was just installed and Peoria will be doing their side this week, yes.
And trustee Riker, we're working on the signs. Kudos to trustee Simmons, I'm the weak link in this whole process, I've slowed the process down, but she's kept me on track, she doesn't let me get away with anything, so we are, we're moving along quite nicely.
And then I also wanted to mention that during the weekly meetings that we have, we currently, as of August 27th, was the last number that I received on replacements, eighty-eight replacements of lead lines. Full replacements were fifty-four, public site only was twenty-six, and private site only was eight. So again, that's a total of replacements, lead lines for our community at no cost to the residents, eighty-eight.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, we've had a pretty uneventful month with the fire department. Chief Artis is here with the, with the numbers to give his monthly report.
Thanks trustee, seventy-three alarms, nothing significant as far as criticalness, and we did have four members complete their EMR course this month, so that's a positive step.
Fantastic. Thank you, chief. Thank you, trustee Steinwaddle. Any other miscellaneous to come before the board? Okay, now we're down to, and you guys have been so good about waiting, I don't know, I didn't put you at the bottom of this. So, discussion of the partnership opportunities with Epic within the Village of Peoria Heights, we have some representatives here. Trustee Riker, you brought this to the board's attention, do you want to take it from here?
Yeah, I'm going to provide her up to the podium to tell us exactly what Epic is and what they can do to help our village.
All right, Epic is not a computer program, like you all thinking. Okay, so Epic, we provide opportunities for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities to achieve their goals and thrive in the community. Do you guys, have any of you guys really heard of Epic?
I have, I worked there.
Okay, perfect. So anyway, my job is to get them out, to everybody out in the community to volunteer. I'm from the Heights, so I was thinking, we come up here once a month and we deliver magazines for news to you and fifty-plus to your counter right there, we did that today, and other little spots here in the Heights.
For the record, this is Angie.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Angie. Sorry. And we volunteer throughout the community, I don't even know how many places. We get, average, a hundred and forty individuals out a month to volunteer. So any new opportunities we have for them to work on their job skills, to hopefully get them a job in the community would be great. So I was thinking, we could come here and vacuum, we can disinfect all your chairs that we've all sat in tonight, how long, how often do you guys disinfect that? Wipe down your counters, there's all kinds of things. We can go to the parks, pick up trash, help with weeds. A lot of things. And then that gives us exposure, so they're out into the community.
Fantastic.
That is wonderful.
I love it.
And it's all kinds of different individuals with different abilities. Some use wheelchairs, so we bring them out to do just like anybody else, they just want to be just like you and I.
So this is a fabulous idea and thank you for bringing it to us. Is there a website we can go on to even understand the scope of the program?
Yeah, so you can go onto Epic's website, we have a website, we have a Facebook page.
Great.
We're always doing stuff, like I said, in the community.
Fabulous.
So one of the questions that came before us when I originally brought this up was liability.
Yes, I have that in my purse. We always carry liability, we can get you the form, so if anything happens, you guys aren't liable, it falls on Epic.
And what, how else can we be supportive of you, because I mean, right now, you're asking if they can volunteer here?
That's all I want, is just to volunteer. I get people to say, well, we can, you know, give you, I was like, I don't want the job, I just want my folks to volunteer, because that's my job, is getting out. Yeah, just when you see them, tell them they're doing a great job and just stuff like that.
Or do they dress in a way that would be recognizable to the fellow residents and visitors, so that they could be recognized?
Sometimes yes, sometimes no, that just varies. Some of them, like when we go to the mall, they do have certain shirts they wear that says Epic on the front, Volunteer on the back. Once we're in the community, usually everybody knows.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought this would be a, a nice opportunity even for like Taste of the Heights, to have them come and kind of help volunteer at that and kind of move things back and forth, or empty garbage, or kind of go around and collect off tables and things like that. I do know that they do accept donations, or especially around like Christmas time, that we could make a donation to their program to kind of help sustain what they're doing as well.
That's great.
But I do think things like, things like the Kringle Market and things like that, they could come and kind of.
So the only thing with some of that is, we are a day program, so we run.
Oh, you don't do evenings?
Yeah, so we run from, I usually say eight-thirty, we can start volunteering until about two, two-thirty is the max, because then they all go home.
Get on buses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay.
So that's the only thing.
We can find stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And then like I said, like.
Yeah, the parks, definitely.
Absolutely.
And then once it gets a little colder, we should cut that off until the weather gets nice.
You can come inside.
But yeah, yeah. So, I mean, anything is very helpful and I appreciate.
Administrator Sutton, could we use this for helping address the, the little landscape areas that are needed on Prospect that aren't being addressed now, or?
Like it save a lot? All the weeds, like save a lot with all the weeds?
We have, we have little patches of dirt along Prospect that.
It's where the trees go into the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
A soil void there that could be, you know, spruced up and made to look much more.
Yep, so the only thing is, I just need to know what you guys would like done, so I can pick the correct individuals to do it.
Okay.
And then set up the time.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do we have to vote on this?
Hold on.
Well, I was just going to ask Angie, as far as supervision, so that's something that we wouldn't have?
No, there's always a staff with our folks. They're never left unsupervised.
Okay. I just wanted to know some of the parameters, I don't want to send you and your staff in a location that maybe you're not used to, so I guess I'll go online and educate myself a little bit more about it.
Okay.
But I'm sure there are things around here that we could do, that we'd appreciate it, and as far as donation goes, and we make a lot of donations throughout the year, we could add that to the list, so I'm sure the board would be very positive about that.
And I think we could get, I mean, there's so many possibilities here, we could get the, the library involved, we could.
Yeah, we actually already volunteer at the library.
School?
So the school's a little tricky, I've talked to Mr. Carroll in the past, I know he's no longer there, but it was always, you got to have a background and it's too expensive to have him come in, but we have stuffed the Easter eggs. They drop us off at the facility, actually, we would pick them up, they'd drop the candy off, we'd stuff the Easter eggs.
You guys work with our life skills program, it's in the school?
So, we have not, but I do work with them when we volunteer at Glen Oak Christian Church. And your life skill program used to come out to Epic for one of our classrooms to learn job skills and stuff, but we no longer do that program.
Gotcha.
So yes.
So it's, it's a way for them to get into our community and maybe eventually kind of branch them out with more options in the community, such as doing things on school property, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
So, no, to your, to your question, trustee Kazam, I don't know that we're necessarily looking to vote on this today, it was just more of, you guys added a lot of questions that I didn't know the answers to, so I thought bringing Angie in here, who's a knower of all things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, and thank you Angie for coming, and thank you trustee Riker for bringing this to our attention. We're now down to general comments from the audience, if anyone else would like to make a comment, feel free to come to the podium, give your name and address, and try to keep your comment to five minutes. Any questions or comments? Comments going once, twice? Comments are closed. We do have a executive session on the agenda under five ILCS 120-2 subsection C, one personnel. If anyone would like to go into that executive session, please.
Can I make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Riker, seconded by trustee Weisenberg. Just as far as information, we will go into this executive session if this vote passes,